Father, we thank you right now for your good service. We thank your name for your name and worship and your love. The only name we've been taught that can be said is the name of people. We thank you right now for what you've done for us. We thank you for what you do in writing. And we thank you for what you're doing to us. Father, we do a bidding for this town. We pray you can visit us and we will do a debt to this community and our people. We thank you again. And we bless you and we will continue to bless you. We don't pray right now for visitors, for peace, for calm about it. We pray for others. We pray for the bereaved right now. Thank you, Lord. Thank you. For a mind to do those things within your heart. And for a mind to do those things within his spirit, Father. Bless the people that help us. Help us make this budget what it is. And we pray right now to be a better, abundant community. We thank you and we thank you. And we bless you with these things in our prayers. Amen. Blessed be you, Jesus Christ, of the United States of America, and you, the Republic, for which you stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the closing of my Black History Month talk. Number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any candidates to be in business? If not, is there motion for approval? You don't know that anymore. Yes.
Thank you.
That's right. It is what I'm trying to say. Okay. Okay. Um, I just want to say that we've got a schedule before us. I think everybody's had a problem with it. And I'm gonna try to hold up to this schedule today and close this afternoon. So that hopefully by one o'clock, we have concluded this first day budget call. Number four, the work of whole budget book session to discuss all aspects of this for your 2019-2020 budget priorities. And I think working on this is Danielle Welch. Okay, so we will start with the certified values. This is kind of our pre-framing. This paper is I am, there's probably this talking. Um, let's see. The general fund's growth taxable value is one billion four hundred and eleven million. The certified value for 2018 was one billion three hundred and forty-six million. So we have a gross taxable value increase of sixty-four million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, which is a four point eight one percent increase. And then for the MSTU, the unincorporated area's gross taxable value for 2019 is one billion one hundred and eighty-three million. And the certified value for 2018 was one billion one hundred and sixteen million, which is a gross taxable value of sixty-six million seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, which is a five point nine eight percent increase. And so this shows the current year millage rates compared to the roll back. The budget was prepared based on even mill rate change, which ranks an increase of revenue. The current millage rate is seven point two four two six mils for the general fund and one point one six seven seven mils for MSTU, for a total of eight point four one zero three mils. The rollback rate is the rate in order to bring in the same amount of revenue as the current year, which is a lower rate. The proposed aggregate millage rate represents a four point nine seven percent increase above the rollback rate. As a result of the increase in gross taxable values for the 2019 year, the rollback rate would actually represent a millage rate decrease. So if even the millage rate is same, the 2018-19 fiscal year, the general fund revenue was nine million seven hundred and fifty-five thousand. And for the 19-20 fiscal year, at the same rate, will generate ten million two hundred and twenty-four thousand, which is a four point eight one percent increase of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty. The MSTU revenue for the 18-19 fiscal year was one million three hundred and four thousand. For the 19-20 fiscal year, the same rate will generate one million three hundred and eighty-one thousand, which is a five point nine eight percent increase, seventy-seven thousand nine twenty. So in total, by keeping the millage rates the same, the 19-20 fiscal year should generate eleven million six hundred and six thousand, which is an increase of five hundred and forty-seven thousand one forty point nine five thousand. This is an overview of the entire budget, including all of the funds. Total budget request for the 19-20 fiscal year is forty-seven million nine hundred and ninety thousand. It is an increase for 19-19 fiscal year. And quick overview of the general fund is having two million seven hundred and three thousand more increase. These are increases. We have retirement increases, metalwork banner fees. We have property insurance premiums. We have properties that was not on our dividend that we wanted to have start paying on, and we added those capital requests and grants. Your airport container, those clothes and grants that were completed, still a decrease. Your rate raise fund increases are in retirement and property insurance premiums, as well as capital requests and the addition of a request for an engineer, a second engineer. Your MSTU funds have increases in retirement. There was a dependent coverage in your health insurance, as well as capital requests and a desire grant. And small county surtax, that was started in January 2018 after we made a final death service payment for the hospital and the E D S capital. So that's just kind of an overview of the entire budget. So what we have in MSTU funds, we budgeted add more taxes based on even millage rate the same, has an increase of seventy-four thousand twenty-three dollars after we allow for the budget allowance. We're anticipating an increase in other residences, these are estimates based on what we received this year and previous years. We have the safer grant, which is a new grant that we received this fiscal year and will carry over. Interchange transfers from the general fund is used to offset the costs that the town makes inside the city when it's transferred based on the budget and the percentage of calls, and it's a decrease, it's the number of calls decreasing. And that helps the general fund by helping with the city. The other transfer is from the small county surtax fund and it's being used to offset the capital request. And I just make that the amount of the cash charity board work. It's going to be the last year. We've been overall revenue of an increase of one hundred and eighty-six thousand six thirty-one. There is an overall increase in expenditures for the MSTU funds. Again, it's due to increases in retirement, dependent changes in health insurance, as well as capital requests and the desire grant. Total recurring expenditure is one billion nine hundred and twenty-four thousand. So the recurring revenue being one billion eight forty-one, there's a deficit of eighty-three thousand four sixty-nine. So like that, we have a reserve, the reserve is funded with money from prior to period four. And we have six hundred and eighty-one thousand five thirty-one in reserve for capital. And I already declared that the eighty-three thousand four sixty-nine deficit from the reserve capital, unless we do something different. And so we get to the general fund. We budgeted add more taxes based on even millage rate the same, an increase of four hundred and forty-five thousand seven fifty-nine. The state care residents are estimate, we're estimating an increase based on department resident estimates, our estimate from what we received this year and last year. We have an increase in our EBLM offset with disability insurance. There are increases in state grants, as well as the federal grants and revenue from other local governments and new revenue we need to offset expenditures. The net overall recurring revenue increase is about five hundred and twenty thousand, which includes the paid for operating expenditures. And with the cash charity board estimate, the busted revenue is twenty-five million two hundred and six thousand. On the expenditure side, we have a decrease in the DCC salaries and benefits. There's an increase in operating expenses. That includes property insurance premiums, metalwork banner fees, and required Medicaid payments that we have to make, an increase in the power, the electricity. The transfers to rate rate and MSTU is an increase due to the request of addition of engineer and the general fund offset the percentage of that expense. Transfers to the competition office, the sheriff's office, their current request is an increase of twenty-four thousand, but that is offset with revenue from the school for the SRA program. Supervisor of elections has an increase of sixty-nine thousand, which is an increase in retirement. A request to fill a position in operating expenses for the election next year and the cost that you have to contribute. The tax collectives have a decrease of nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And property freighter does an increase of eighty-seven thousand, which is an increase in retirement, as well as the addition and operating expenses. The parts increases for retirement, increase on the way. We have your legal aid designated fund for the 19-20 fiscal year. Some recurring expenditures, we have your EMS, PCDA, health department. It's both the same as this year. The actual request for the PCDA is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand two thirty. But historically, we budgeted what was approved in the current year. And then this after mayor, which this year it was, or last year it was covered, this year now it's one hundred thousand. So that's what I hosted, but their request is from one hundred and thirty-eight.
If you wanted that one hundred stuff.
And they actually submitted a second budget. A copy of it is in your binder. I didn't put it on here. Their second budget request is if the city agrees to help fund some of it, then that is increased it to over two hundred thousand. But I did the first request. I didn't do that first request.
Yeah, we upgraded a hundred thousand dollars to the issue.
No, they're, no, yeah. Wait on the audit. They receive it once the audit is amended and approved.
Pretty good. Oh, you gotta go to the funeral. I was talking about caring about it.
Uh, go ahead. Some of who is, uh, the two issues, CPA wants a hundred thousand dollars. He's gotten this year's budget. I remember Mr. Page said, can he get a good audit and we'll turn that loose? And we got an audit and LaVon's got it. I thought it was the board.
Right.
Okay, that's good. That's good. I got some concerns about it, but I'm jumping around there. We did, we have CPA on our board. And I've had them contact the auditor and make a report on our next board meeting, which is Thursday. Uh, I won't get a lot of detail, but could you look at the audit? There's things there called Sweetwater Reserve being on five years, okay? Because we got some six counties up and clean up and blame speak, it's fought, okay? Uh, while LaVon, I'm advocate of all, I've dealt with all thirty years. And we couldn't find the audit, okay? So, uh, I went on the Office General website, how had you got, looked at a lot of them. And so we just, I'll get to that in a minute, but there's, uh, my audit, more important than the budget, what you plan to do, we all have our own experience. And anyway, expert on audit, I've heard it in the look.
That's why we got him a lot of things to throw away and go.
We got, we got, we got, and I'll get to another one, man. But I used to get earnings, elders, all that, we give our visiting this state. But anyway, all it's important for, we learn a lot from this old audit. There's one thing in there, couple of years ago, said CPA had forty thousand dollars. It's a little inflexible. And I think I figured that when it hit them off those blocks, uh, on track out there, it's totally, they pay twenty-four thousand dollars. And so many cities failed that, CPA can get that forty thousand back, but they told me all bricks flat. And you can leave that up. I mean, I give a lot of ideas, I mean, everyone understands that, they do the CPA. And, uh, you'll see the audit, it's got six counties up and all that Sweetwater Reserve and about Virginia twenty-sixty. All that's just worth, bottom line, where's money coming from, where you go. And look at that little question, but I'll give a report from day three, yeah. My husband did it. I'll, I'll, I'll see, I'm just, that, uh, really concerned that I'm willing to load it, it's good, and I can get it, uh, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna emphasize it for us, all this is good, all this is really good. One doesn't think she does a good job, you let me proud her. She, she knows that, we're gonna put it, she goes, goes to think, uh, back up. I'm saying, why don't we get on that board and you specify it, okay? Right? You tell me that. Same, that's the same, but you're a lot, so we used to get on that board anyway. I got, uh, my thinking is, we have three budgets, we're gonna work on one, just being so building coalition with the city, chamber, chamber, you still have that bitch, that board member on the board, they didn't, they didn't vote. They just, they were just supporting, yeah, the vision. And the other thing we're doing is just stop that. While it's on, since the school board, man, they lay us on, the school gets, the youth box truck that I saw, brother. Uh, so youth box truck goes to school, they just have that interface to CPA. I guess for us to get this thing, we voted to, that Jason showed up and said, let's locate an office there that hadn't been used in years, and he's gonna pay us two hundred thousand dollars a month. Yeah, no, that's true, I'm two hundred a month. It's gonna about cover our, we have to cover our, our utilities. Anyway, having her clients come in, the D there, the officer, the lady there, the officer, that's, that makes a difference. Got us back to the coalition. And I'm, the little part of me, you know, about that partnership, that we can get in the league, but, uh, yes, getting that show, we had a real good presentation. I had him attend our CPA board meeting. And then I had this woman, they really, they, you know what to do, they got a lot of office. And yes, nothing that's always said. But anyway, that, that's part of the, still a new thing, we'll be able to take with the full CPA. And I just, uh, I wanted to argue with Junior to be laid on the street. And I, 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 y'all can only option, yeah, y'all, but we are asking for that. I'm certain you've been going back to the way that you have a couple of years, because that, uh, at the other team.
Hundred forty-two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's what we just, like, go back to that form, but I need to tell you, so we got some things. I don't know if I told LaVon, but Fred, he's, he's trying to get things back on track. You can figure out that what I told LaVon, but, but there was non-agree with Scott Fred, it never lived agreement with it. He's just saying, he got paid that time. It was non-agree with our county. We got that on the gym for, there's a draft, and that's the next year. We got that on the gym for next Thursday. Uh, you know, non-agree with city using that building, but get Jason in there. It's four of that to become, be addressed with this and that. Uh, several things, let's reach in between people, side of, side of tie down. And, uh, the other thing I wanna focus on is, uh, public, public, public accessibility and public support we do. We've got those audits and there's a link to our turnip website. They got, I have to get two of them. Also, one of that gets my C F and somebody to do, I, uh, that's saying that the Doug Party website. There's nothing in there before, it shouldn't be, but maybe just the one there, nothing is. We all got, just, you know, I mean, the Bible, we think, oh, today. If you get, require us to do Bible before you establish a board. The purpose, basically, Fred, for expanding board is to get four. The, the, the board, so maybe four of them easier to get, but what it's done, just give up, uh, we have no added favor, they do the county, we don't have a county, they break what you got. Got a good cross section of, uh, board members like David CPA and Martin Brooks and the base, and, uh, due to business, and I'm utilizing that. And the sunshine, I can't talk to them except to me, okay? And it's probably going to go to me every twice a month, that we, we pretty much, I think, I'm sure we voted on that, but we talked about it. And so board group can't be involved if we want to, and, um.
I think what we talked, talked about was maybe the possibility of having a workshop.
Well, that's good.
And then having meeting after that, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Right.
We can do, we can use our committee workshop, our board workshop, at eleven thirty, and have board meeting. They, they want to keep the board meeting, really, that's perfect. The workshops and, uh, uh, seeing, really, just all the ethics for them too. I'm just trying to get in with them. And they can do a government board, chief of organs, just maybe a meeting, you can come to our board and talk for, for a minute, but I, we've been there, we've been turning it, it'd be free. Anyway, uh, public accessibility, success, go with the subject. And I don't have to tell you all, if you have people on the street, CPA just have a really big inning right now, okay? Some of them go back, they, they just got out of control, CD, and that's five minutes on my way back, you know? With that behind us, and what I've told you, is we, we, where we are, and get that out, I hope it's okay. It's not without figuring out what I have. Uh, accountability, that's still, uh, still a listen, I thought that. And, and, so I think, I think, but we are, and we still act to the original outset. And it's, it will tell me what y'all have to do, because if we got, I'm wasting time, or I don't want to, but it's, uh, these questions, I guess, it's not.
But I, I just want to say, yes, that, uh, since I'm on that board, I'm not a voting member of that board, but, um, I can see a huge difference in the past, pretty much. Um, I, they think we're in quite a different way. But now, um, we're seeing a lot more organizations, Ray Kurz spent, I don't know how many, how much time, trying to dig through and dig up stuff that was not available to us, to the public or anybody. And everything, now I can say he's on that, with every, all the medicine, all the business, and he's putting on a website, and I always said, it's gonna be where the public can get to it, but it's many notices, attend, we don't need attendance, the merit. And everything else, the fund, and I'm really happy to see that, and I'll tell you, Ray Kurz has been an excellent young, I mean, an excellent young guy, I really have to give.
We've had Peter, he's been our director, we've seen shots, we've seen him. The top, you know, all that GPS and running on the turn signal.
But we got something for the lady, we got something for the lady, it's not this time.
Let me kind of go back one other thing, on this add more taxes thing, okay? I think I'm saying that you're supposed to create ten good jobs for the come, okay? We had one for me, just, we're gonna talk about Thursday, that's got one high job, you can't win all of ours. And maybe down the road, there'll be some more jobs. But I feel that if that's your football player, players that potentially need to have no deal, they need, we need more, and I'm gonna vote, I'm not gonna vote for ten of that two like that, if that is, if they can provide you with ten good, high-paid jobs for the playtime, you go. I think the common, uh, here, of the orders, along with, it's supposed to be pretty specific, you know?
There are specific departments, and there are several avenues within the ordinance that make, that make that abatement available, so.
Like Walpott, are you into that one of them?
Um, enterprise, which is supposed to be a practical destination, and then to create, to create their job. So what I would recommend is that each CPA board member becomes familiar with that ordinance.
But to me, to begin, I wouldn't mind, uh, ladies is a long, uh, that's, but, 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 but not that complicated, okay? It may be all kind of ways you can get at it, but.
Exactly.
I don't know, right, because I'm back to, I'm here for one.
I don't like the, enter, come, come, stuff, you know, that comes with all the capital. There has the, the ten.
That's, that's, I, I.
But then Enterprise, all the ordinance in the back, back from San Pedro and Betis.
That's like it was.
Yeah, what?
Oh.
Well, they terminated, well, they.
No, he withdrew. He withdrew.
Well, I'm thinking about, would he still out of the?
According to.
Now, he is, he is, he is a job.
There were, there were.
I'm there, I'm there in ten jobs, and then it's in there, right, along, you can bow it.
Now, they said some, I don't want to say all that. That, that, I, so LaVon, that's after me, I was like, this, shut it off, you're a liar. This was coming up, if that raise spent a hundred times, it carried that to you, okay? So one to five jobs, okay? And then we gonna, we gonna, Bruce, he's gonna spend time on it, okay? And this one comes back, and if they can do, you gonna spend time on it. It's only eight hundred dollars tax way, but it's, it's been small. We're spending more return, then first we get out of it. Well, yeah, we need, we need to work on that, but I'm not, I'm not seeing anything far, that's just, uh, we need to fly to the border, uh, I thought, maybe it's a question, the guy, I just, uh.
They're all pretty good.
Ask him, we'll, on the hundred thousand dollars, we'll get a report, and you can look at it too. We get a report, they beat your Thursday, he, he talked to the county, how close, we'll see what he comes up with. If he can, relieve it, if, if it's fine, you know, I appreciate the time and do the best I can.
Oh, y'all, I want to say thank you for setting up, you're doing a good job. Um, I know your pay is probably not, but it's hard, but, um, we appreciate what you did.
I invited Matt Apple to come, he's, Matt will ask another man, I thought he's gonna be a two, but it's, it's the word, it's the thing we're here, it's, uh.
Thank you. Um, so I want to do now, really, to, in the middle of your presentation, but since we have guests here all the time, and I'm gonna go talk to the time today, that are here all the time, and I'm gonna go talk to the time today, and firstly, for y'all, I don't want you to wait, and so, I'd like to go in and get there, if we, if, 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 um, what time we'll come back to you, is that okay? Okay, so, hey, from now on, it's a ten, it's Joe Albrecht, good morning.
What do you got? I don't think that's gonna take thirty minutes.
Okay.
No, that's right, I've got, um, it's short, sweet, and good news, so, okay? Not yet, not yet, working on it, um, so, in terms of it, I might have Crystal come up and just maybe talk about voluntary, dental, things like that, the medical, uh, insurance, things are still progressing very nicely, the insurance committee's done a great job, uh, keeping everything going the way it needs to be going, um, this year, we weren't able to get a rate pass, no increase on the insurance, which, um, that's a good, good thing, very good, um, one thing I did want to talk about, though, and I touched on this a little bit with, with Lamond, and brought it up some to the insurance committee, one of the reasons this group is doing so well, is because years ago, there was a lot of time spent thinking about, how, how are we gonna structure the program to best benefit the account, um, and it's for great, uh, we've had a couple of years of, um, a variety of high cost claims that we were able to claim, but not have a rate increase because of them, those types of things, strategies performed beautifully, we're at a position now where that strategy's starting to be nibbled in due, so, I, I really wanna take the time, um, this fall, winter, and spring, to go through all of this again with the insurance committee, and evaluate where we are with our strategy, and if we need to make some changes, make the recommendations, um, I guess it would be next term to the board, um, if we needed to make some recommendations for change, for the strategy, um, might be if we go through the process and determine that everything's great, and we just wanna stay of course, and don't need to change anything, but I think we need to stay ahead of, stay in front of it, it's, it's working really, really well, um, the one driving factor of your, of your insurance premium is your claim, of course, your medical loss ratio, and currently, um, your current medical loss ratio is right at eighty-five percent before we subtract out high cost claims. Um, when you subtract high cost claims out, we get back down into the seventies, which is where we wanna be to have this buffer to protect us from high cost claims, my concern is, um, there's, you have to take into consideration inflation, everything goes up, so what are we doing to, to take care of that? And I don't, I don't necessarily think we're in a bad position, I just wanna make sure, you know, so, uh, for a cost perspective, there's a rate pass, um, everything's working great, I just really wanted to open up for any questions, if you had any questions, um, what we wanted to accomplish by bringing the sheriff into the plan worked, our credibility factor went up, which was, I'm, we got, we were talking about that, I wanted that to happen, um, and it went, just like we thought it would, um, the credibility factor, which used to hover somewhere in the fifties, is now in the mid to upper sixties, I believe, I don't know where...
I might.
Okay, I don't have, I can't see that far anymore. Yeah, it's in the mid to upper sixties, and which is what we want, um, so we're starting to see a benefit from that.
So that was a good move.
Yes, ma'am, it was.
In one way or another.
Yes, it was, um, you know, at least there was some discussion at one point about the timing of it, but the idea of it was never any question, it was gonna be beneficial, and we knew that, um, but it worked out the way we want, uh, creating stability, so, that's the gist of what's going on with the medical insurance, uh, do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, can you, um, explain in a little more detail about the concept of having that buffer, and how, how that actually works? My, my perception is that the buffer is, is just that, it, it kind of protects us in years that we have numerous high cost claims, that our present, our, um, excuse me, our MRR, even in the seventies, is a little bit higher than we had in recent years, so the higher the MRR, the lower chance that we'll get a rate pass for a reduction, or anything similar to that, and I think from the conversations we've had in the past, is that we're kind of petering at this point, so, taking the rate pass is great for our budget for next year, but if we have, oh, if we have a bad year as far as claims, then it can, we can have an even bigger increase in next year, so the, the purpose of that is for stability in our premium, correct?
Correct, um, so, the way your premiums are calculated, everybody's premiums are calculated this way, is your, your medical loss ratio, there's a magic number of eighty-five percent, so, that eighty-five percent, that's what federal government has set the regulation at, the insurance company has to spend eighty-five percent of your premium on claims, now, the problem with that is when they do that, and you have the unexpected high cost claims, your plan blows up, right? We've seen this before, and you also have no way to protect yourself from what's referred to as your medical trend factor, which is your expected upcoming claims, this is where you see people, a lot of times, who are just kind of floating along, and all of a sudden, they get that twenty-five percent risk, because they're, they're operating at that eighty-five. Years ago, the insurance committee made the decision that we wanted to create what we call a risk portal, or a buffer, where we operate below the eighty-five at our own choice, and the reason we did that is because the number one concern when we did the evaluation, it was five, six years ago now, with the insurance committee, their number one concern was volatility, you know, what happens if we get a twenty-five percent, you know, rate increase out of nowhere? So we devised this strategy to come in and build this corridor, so when you have these high cost claims, you might go up and bump that eighty-five, but you, it's the odds of going to blow up that are really low, so, you pay a little bit more every year, in good years, to give yourself the protection in the bad years, okay?
That's good.
That's what we're doing, in, in simplest terms, so in the last few years, you had a lot of high cost claims, but because we had this corridor in place, it didn't blow the pop out of it, we operated really smoothly. Now, the reason, I think what you're getting at, is that corridor used to operate somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent buffer, and the reason that number was not random, we came up, we calculated what that number needed to be to protect us from the high cost claims, we were correct in our calculation, but when we had the high cost claims, it didn't blow up, every, for the last two or three years, that corridor is shrinking a little bit every year, because there's one factor that we're not addressing, and that's medical inflation, everything costs a little bit more every year, gallon of milk costs a little bit more than it did five years ago, egg, truck, whatever, pick something, everything costs more, the cost to go to the doctor, the cost to get an MRI, all those types of things, costs more now than they did five years ago, that increase is medical inflation, we've been using that risk corridor to protect us for the last two or three years from these high cost claims, we're not taking into consideration the medical trend right now, so what we need to do, and this is why we need to do this, this analysis with the insurance committee, is figure out, do we need to have an adjustment to account for medical trends, to give us that full cushion back again, because we're operating right now about eighty percent of the cushion that we want, so, that's the gist of it, and I might be getting more technical than you care, for me to get into that.
You know, considering, and when you're doing all of this, do you take into consideration your aging workforce too?
Yeah, there's a factor in the renewal, um, it's a demographic factor, where they take into consideration the age, and the gender, and all the different aspects of the demographic of your particular group, so that is accounted for.
That, if, I mean, say, if you have one employee that they have a test topic in there, would that one employee shift the whole thing?
If you didn't have the cushion, it absolutely would.
One, one person, wow.
We had one, uh, one high cost claim that, in a given file or a risk, and, and I, I might be getting way back on this, but, just to answer your question, with real information of what actually occurred, we had one claim that made up eighty-five percent of the premium in that violation, one claim, but because we had that cushion...
Right, and that's even with reinsurance.
Correct, 'cause see, that, so, you got the cushion underneath the eighty-five to protect you, reinsurance protects you above the eighty-five, so you, you built, I presume you called it a risk corridor, because you got protection above it with the reinsurance, and you got protection below it with your cushion, um, this is your insurance committee work, they, they're, they're good, I mean, I, I, these guys go with me all over the same, I write about often, it's, they, they're good.
And so, for our current plan, from what I recognize, we have made minor adjustments through the last several years to try to bring that, the numbers, as part of our premium, just there wasn't a big increase, we tried to tweak, but we're kind of running out of, we're kind of running out of ways to nibble at the current plan without it having a large effect, and that's why in some of your, the deductible will go up slightly, or your prescription benefits maintain a little bit, because you try to find what gives us the most bang for our premium, but, and affects the, the fewest people, so, we're kind of running out of options.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do in the meeting, the firewood, you know, we've got this fire, we just have a firewood up here to throw a lot of them from time to time, what, what, what we're trying to do in that is, we're, we're taking the, the small changes that impact the fewest number of people in the town to deal with this medical claim, so the risk corridor takes care of your high cost claims, that, that part of it is working beautifully, when we change the deductible just a little, or change your prescription benefits just a little, what we're trying to do is impact that premium just, just enough to deal with the medical inflation, and we're, we just, we're out of options on that, we used all these little bits and pieces that we could, and now we are out of options on how we're gonna do any more small adjustments without it being something that, you know, we're gonna have various different conversations, but that's what we're trying to get at.
What's the medical inflation, uh, annually?
It's, typically, it's between three and five percent, um, that's nat, but that's a national number, and some of the more rural or remote areas, it can be, it can vary greatly, so it can be a lot below that, but there's other areas of medical inflation in a given area, it could be twelve, fifteen percent, and every year, it's huge even more, because if you just think about it in terms like this, so if you have a small town, that has three doctors in that town, and over an eighteen month period, two of those doctors retire, and a new doctor comes to town, it charges a lot more, so, versus a big city, you know, like Jacksonville, they've got thousands and thousands of doctors, so if doctors retire, you're not gonna have as big of an impact. So when you, when you're thinking about it in terms of a, a small, rural area, which is where I like to work, the places we work in, that's the leading pile over the place, because a clinic can open and drive costs way down, but at the same time, a clinic can close, and a new one comes to town and drives costs way up, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of awful.
Well, that's kind of off the case.
Well, you know, I like, it, it, it's definitely a challenge, but, um, I like coming here, because I always have good stuff to say, because we don't, it, it, it works well here, not even one of my clients works it, we just, um, everything working like it's supposed to, we're gonna be, hopefully, coming back in spring with a report, either everything's great, we don't need to change much, or, you know, these are the three things I think you should consider counting in the conversation, so, that's where we're at.
Okay, so right now, it's good.
Right now, it's good, I wouldn't be leaving over it right now, I don't...
Any questions on the board?
Okay, if you wanna come and tell them about the voluntary stuff?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Good morning, good morning, okay, all, all, and all, sorry, the business is staying the same, we have a rate pass, or a rate guarantee until twenty one, we have twenty twenty one, the general insurance does kind of three percent, three point four increase, which is for an employee with an employee's family, which is an increase of three dollars a month, three dollars sixty, sixty cents a month, that's the most for an employee, I don't think, not even, the life insurance, did have the basic life, also has an increase, it has a fifty percent increase, that sounds like a lot, but the basic life, which is the only thing that did have an increase, the sixty cents per employee, which would be a hundred thirty, approximately, a hundred and thirty-one dollars towards the board, what makes you true, that's the only one that has the trend to have any increase, the supplemental that has a rate pass for next year, right, that, where we are, now, the, the, oh, the retirees on the lot, we did have approximately eleven retirees, they would have an increase, theirs would be two and eighty half, they're not, they're not here, uh, if everything's under a dollar, I'm going, go on.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What's them, company that we use now?
Humana.
Humana?
Yes, ma'am.
Part of Humana, been in this thing, for a couple of years, we in America, we in, what, America?
Yeah, yeah.
When I go to the dentist, for my regular, five years, that, uh, that's sort of frowned on, the company that we use now, and, uh, it seems to be, it's kind of exciting about, compared to the previous one, and the changes are all... I go to the dentist, you live in the space, uh, give me twenty dollars, make you a dent, you know, it's a little bit different, you, I just wanted to let you know about them, uh...
Do you mind me asking what's about, or you have, 'cause there's, my doctor told, there's no longer any network.
No, I use, I use something more.
Something one is good, they need a network, so that's...
Well, I still get a bill every time I go, got one yesterday, you know, send that twenty dollars, make you a dent, I'll turn you over to the class.
If you don't mind, would you bring me a copy of that, so I can work on that?
Yeah, I buy a certain trash, I'm a kid every time, you know, you look, do my cleaning, or whatever you all...
Yes, they, she recovered that a hundred percent, there shouldn't even be a deductible for our claim. I must have made something extra. Yes, there's a lot of some of these, right, or deep claim, it's...
I mean, it's okay, you know, twenty dollars, make you a dent, I'm, something about, I'm here to pay it, 'cause I don't need to be collecting anything.
But we do have...
I, I, I'll be, I can get it, I'll pack it up to the water, and you can get it, too, they're gonna need to bring it up to my little...
No, if, if you don't tell me, I don't ask, I can't work on this all the time, any other questions?
Yes, ma'am, seven, uh, I think a thousand, two, uh, can get more of that.
Yes.
Their premium, their pricing, that's what they get.
The pricing could be, they could pay eighty percent, uh, fifty percent, uh, they, 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 uh, uh, depending on, depending on what it is, so we can definitely...
Probably my bill, yes.
Yes, ma'am, we do, okay, any other questions? Thank you so much. Anybody else, got it?
Yeah, Mr. Jeff, he said, you come here, and you carry your people to do what, to other towns and tell them about it? Or, you say you carry your people to the other town, and tell them about it, is that what he said? Yeah, you gotta figure, well, I, I wanna, uh, would you have a phone message, that's, you know, like, we, we in a cabinet floor, you know, you don't need...
Small, small cabinet.
Ball, yeah, yeah, he's a gentleman, so, yeah, if he's five, that one, that one, that's, it's... How about I check on that?
I'm gonna get that one.
I, I see how that works, uh, if people start acting like y'all, I certainly would, but I, they don't, it's, it's...
Will you tell them that?
I will, I will, thank y'all.
Okay, that's it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank y'all so much, I'm gonna do that.
Pretty good.
Okay, it's ten o'clock here, so, we don't have our next dinner until ten thirty, so let's go back to, you said, now, it's getting cold up there, 'cause I'm walking off, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm walking off. Okay, I think we're on, um, general, um, operating expenditure, they're like, oh, the bottom section is the major grant under capital, and we've shown up as an experiment, but the resident is coming in to offset either all our percentage of it, from the grant, and this is our new non-recurring capital, and it totals four hundred and forty-two thousand by thirty-eight, the total expenditure posted at seventeen million, one hundred sixty-seven thousand before the capital adjustment, with the recurring revenue being sixteen million, eight hundred thirty-one thousand, and recurring... and thirty-one thousand, and the recurring expenditures after I do the capital adjustment of the four hundred and forty-two thousand is sixteen million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, which shows us in a good five hundred and six thousand nine hundred and eighty. Our, the total expenditure that we busted is seventeen million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand five ninety-one. And then I take out the non-recurring capital from that, because our tax, and then with our recurring revenue of the sixteen million, eight thirty-one, and the adjusted recurring expenditures, our revenue is more than our expenditure by a hundred and six thousand. So we do not show a deficit. Okay, well, we have a lot of add-ons this year. We have a lot of new requests this year. For capital, okay, yes, get capital, yes, yeah, okay. Keep going. And some of those are not included in the numbers, and we, they draft, um, capital improvement that we handed out tomorrow, and anything that's on the budget is highlighted in yellow. And we'll come back, we'll come back Thursday and talk about specifics. This is a list of what is designated to be funded with our taxpayer's board. Capital improvements are projects that might be completed before the end of this full year, therefore the current funds designated for those projects will carry forward. And it's a fund for the legally designated fund, a bingo fund that has a reserve or a sinking fund, and the fund that illegally restricted in housing. And that brings us to...
Who's in here?
Sorry?
Brian did.
Here's the, that's what's up the hall.
Well, that's the park, that's the hall.
That's the state.
The state, yeah, okay, I, I...
And it would be on here, because only there was a donation, and if you didn't spend all of the donation money, that's what was planned. And so that brings us to the general fund reserve. And the capital improvements already reflect the new capital request, and is subject to change between now and end of the fiscal year. And so the total expenditure busted in the general fund, including recurring, non-recurring, designated is twenty-five million, one hundred dollars. So that's our, your total over. And you'll see on our reserve for capital improvement, as of July the twelfth, we had an increase of one point eight million. And, um, like I said, that is subject to change between now and our first hearing that we do in September, because we may have some expenses that I'm not aware of, or something may come up, and we have to, you know, we have to do a budget transfer for contingency because we have something come up, or something like that. So that number may adjust a little bit before the first hearing in September, but normally And that's all I have. That's it, thank you.
But then that's about one for the jail, is that one maybe another ninety-nine hours?
Sorry?
The last one on that, on that program?
So when they have revenue that comes in for local reimbursement, and so that money is going for their reserve for capital improvements specifically for the jail.
That is to, if, if they ask, you know...
Help, for the jail, or anything that's a capital agreement out there.
Yeah, I notice that we...
I think last year, we got a killer, we used a killer, some material come out of it. Well, you know, it's, this is a good topic, and y'all have worked very hard on this, and I really appreciate the support that's gone down on this project. Certainly a lot better than it was last year, but, uh, I think that this board, we need to be very careful in how we spend our tax payer money. Um, it's because we're looking good, I think that everybody comes with a handout, that we don't need to give the form away. Uh, I just wanted to remind the board that we have business to our, uh, uh, reserves before, about our budget, how to act here, and, uh, I'm hoping that we can replenish that, um, instead of, um, it's gonna get a little bit of money that we've got in our pocket, so I can have another one. Yeah, I get a dollar, that's why I'm holding my pocket, so I can get somewhere and spend it.
Well, that's a problem.
And, um, and so I want us to be very cautious, I know that we got a lot of people coming, there's gonna be actions discussed, but, um, you know, this is a business, and, uh, we have to run our business, uh, freely, and, um, I just want to be very, very careful. Y'all wanna take a break until, when I have to play golf.
Any other questions? Now, I haven't seen all this. We've got a little bit, a hundred and six thousand, should be good, look at that. If we didn't make it, if we didn't make any changes at all, uh, would the pension be any in the reserves carried for this too? Or is the reserve gonna be the same?
That one I said was going into the reserve.
That one I said, not much.
It was going into the reserve.
So if we add any more into the reserves, we would have to take something out once you go off and work very hard to spend. If we get this three hundred thousand dollars out of the hospital, would reserves be a good place to put that?
That's where it was at.
That was where?
Because it would, depend on when we got it. We would deposit it, and it would be part of our taxpayer's board in the next year if we got it this year.
All right, and then our reserves would be refinched about four hundred thousand. And then maybe a couple of other things we might as well leave out.
Right.
But I would commend you on the hard work, because, uh, it, it, it's, one of the few years that I've been here where you got a little bit of money, really, you still there and paying taking operations, so they got way enough, several dollars, and that thing worked. But we wanna be careful, as I care and says, and I would spend it. And we have a one request, we've got a hundred thousand bucks, if you can get any, they are ready, you know, have to be for a hundred and...
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. So, and I'm sure we'll have others.
Well, you know, it, it, and we need to, just like at home, we need to put back some hard time, you don't ever know whether it's gonna be hit, bombed, or stolen, uh, we don't know what's gonna happen. And, um, you know, since we've had to spend money before that we didn't have, uh, I'm very conservative with this, just gonna be very conservative with this budget, and, uh, I, 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 I'm gonna be quite candid about what we give away and don't give away. I always say I'm gonna stay proper, kind of, um, and it, and all that, you can see from this, uh, obviously some people realize that we, I have a little bit better budget here, so they've added in, you could see, they've added in, uh, capital things, and, and, you know, they can ask, and that's okay to ask, but it doesn't mean that we have to agree. And I appreciate y'all putting together, you putting together what is actual mainly, and then it comes to us to go that through, and just because you put it in, you're not a big, you're saying, this is what we do, you put the plan here, then it's something else, because through that, it's okay, if you're talking that we really wanna do, or we really wanna, you know, build our, um, kitty back up on her time, or that's, okay, that's what I'm gonna say. Um, so, I mean, we are a business, and we gotta run this like a business. Um, and I think that's what the taxpayers are expecting of us, is to operate this, like a business like we would at home. Sheriff, are you ready to, uh, present?
Is you all right?
Come on. You walked in just at the...
Okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come over. The general budget, does anybody have a copy of this, or should have? Thank you, buddy. Anyway, we try to do the best we could, uh, I think we did a pretty good job, we just tried to keep everything the same, and that's what I'm up. Uh, being put in there, that if y'all found the money, when we could hire another deputy, it would help us with our situation for the south end of the county. Your time to get low, short, they always come up short down there. Uh, my goal is to have a deputy down there, and see that, definitely eat beef, period. Supervisor will work the twins, especially in the summertime when they get on the road with people, the population goes down there, from Scotty, seeing, you know, fishing during the summer. That's all of the goal, is pass the money down at all the time we got a lot of work. If you can do something about it, I appreciate it. If you came there, we could just make that as close as we are, I appreciate it. If you require any help, or we're busy to do, like you know, we'd have to work on it. Wouldn't make it happen another way.
I wanna say that I've seen a president at Hennepin, uh, seen quite more this year, and I wanna say that I appreciate that, and I'm sure everybody else, so I've seen more of a president this year than I've ever seen. Uh, and that, that's, that's good, because of, um, you know, the time that, that we have down there, and, um, I appreciate that.
I mean, it's a, it's a strong time, yeah, but we do appreciate it. We see the dinner, I'm just...
We, we strive to get better, and to get better, of course, it takes a while. Now, we, I mean, it probably can get better, I think, y'all. Uh, we got, uh, the pitches up, and the town is down, our crash reports are down, I don't know what that is.
I wish you could, um, talk some of that speed, that's why I'm lying down there. Everybody else is about stupid. From, you know, we're right there at the bridge, going to Husker Park, and I'm calling you, they really speak through there, and when you're down there, you see there's a lot of people walking, and...
Oh, I understand.
... and then all walking up down the road, there's, uh, golf carts, there's bicycles, and, um...
That's one reason I like to have a deputy there every day. That's that's all of the goal. And we will get her, we'll eventually get her. We're gonna, we're gonna catch the speed load. I think, do we get the speed load fixed yet, morning?
It's, it's just about there, it's on...
Okay, we got some lights out anyway, we, we try to keep it down there in different areas, that seems to help some, you know, and then, of course, we go back and give us a readout, and then we'll go back and work out areas that's higher in speed, and that is, I get complaints all the time about people speeding down there.
And really does.
Yeah.
And there's too many people on the road, and there's a beach, and there's not a big...
There gonna be...
... walking, and then there's golf carts, and, you know, so I just, um, appreciate that, so I'm doing what I can do. Any, any questions?
We have some people, we need to keep these things, thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir, and y'all more than welcome. Like I said, we, we do the best we can, what we got, and we strive to do better, you know, nobody's perfect, but we do, we do what we can. I think we do a pretty good job.
Sheriff, you're doing a great job, I appreciate it.
I'm, 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 I'm,
Really, from you deputies?
Yeah, fourteen deputies, but they have other hired staff people that, um, big events, you can put in some of your hired people.
Yeah, we, we just, yeah. Yeah, I'll tell them, just cause you put on set bar or set strap, that only the deputy who's been deputy, we're deputy first, we're gonna get the governor, whatever we gotta say. But we just, we just, we've got a large family, we try to spread everybody out.
Yeah.
So, I try to keep the supervisor, if something bad happens or something, we got a supervisor to look for. I've been in a situation, one happened, where the supervisor didn't know what to do. And I was on the ground with somebody, and he just, he just barked. Uh, I'm trying to keep out of that one again. And the barman is gonna tell me, they gonna call him, they gonna... If the board has, to me, if the board has a supervisor, so I can get there, or to Chief to get there, he already knows what to do. They call the paper sucker that we don't know what to do, uh, to get hurt.
Look, if you need, um, another deputy, I, I support that. I certainly, um, think that we need to protect our citizens and our citizens' property. And I'd be more out to, and I, I am willing to, for me, one commissioner, to help you get this extra deputy. I'd rather put the money there in versus another, somewhere, somebody else wants another office staff or something, because that one thing, a deputy means a lot more to us.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. So, just do what you can, I appreciate, I appreciate what you do. Uh, man, we get on. I go to these conferences, think when you hear these horror stories about, they're, oh, the board don't get along with Sheriff, and everybody has all these problems, all that. I just don't have all that, and I'm thankful, I'm...
We have to work together, because this is a partnership. And, um, so, uh, you know, that's just the way it comes to be.
I also appreciate.
Well, how much, I'm done right now, how much would that?
Sixty-eight, sixty-eight.
And if I can say something more quick?
Yes.
I just want to come and remind everyone that the Sheriff's Office has done an incredible job trying to keep our maintenance forces down. We have not had enough rewards, not on what I know, and out of funding, for additional funding this year. We've had, we've been very creative as far as moving money around to address some of the maintenance issues at the jails. And there is capital, recycling, maybe through budget for the jails. But, um, we work very well together and I really appreciate that, that partnership because it helps all of us.
Sure does, sure does.
We're going to do it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say something for the community. I was in a little corner, they, and they just want to know what the state of town is best known for. And what came out of that, out of kind of about ten people, were there to try to the state of town, just kind of like come together and do what they need to do to try to lead eighteen of them. And that's it.
And we got Sheriff, do we got, do we got her off? No, I appreciate it.
Call me, I'll be right back.
You have to do, you have to take care of it.
That's right, that's right, yes, that's right. You can always count me in my job, whatever I gotta say, if you support us, we'll do it.
That's right, and you got our support.
Thank you. I gotta tell you one thing, the general public is proud of murdered men, for a man who... Boy, that name, Doris. And I hear, I'll hear a lot of good time about murdered men, so, as long as you know that. Thank you, my public, appreciate you. And so, there again, we gonna, we got there for you, whatever you need, front and center.
Right, and you got this person over there Christmas, long, great job.
Doing a good job, we got her some help now. She had, uh, our coordinator help, she left, but she's doing a good job. Lou Roan?
Well, thank you, Pumpy Door, yeah.
Yeah, I hope so. It's a night y'all ain't seen much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You know, probably, you look, it's a bomb, I'm...
That's true, very true. Thank you, if you need it, call me, if you see something, say something.
We, 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 we offer it, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I was gonna say, I was saying, right, we got, um, well, if y'all, if y'all wanna call Bruce and tell him we'll be ready for him at, uh, ten thirty. And that move till about thirty minutes. And then maybe Mark, so everybody will run to the... He don't mind. You want me to have, um, a hand?
Hey, look at that.
Well, Bruce can come back at ten thirty. And, um, if he's not gonna take the full thirty minutes, you can ask him, and we'll get, get Mark to come on.
Yeah, I can figure it out.
And then, and then you get off, and you get off, and you...
Yeah, we, we watch it, we watch it, we work, we work, we work. So, I'm like, yeah, yeah, the whole family, thank you.
But I also...
I think, you know, what's the deal? If he's supposed to be, what I do is... But I think old Danny, I'm...
That is, it's hard.
No, we, we did it.
Yeah, okay, we're getting a handle.
Ah, okay, so, we all need to get that one.
Back to you.
Good, good. Good to watch.
Hanging in there. That's important, man.
We got water, doesn't have coffee, but if you want, definitely, sure.
And y'all growing up?
A lot.
I heard so, that last week, you don't have a funeral, that is, that funeral, oh, for people. The way the people feed him out there, he's my man. He's just wondering how to keep this period, got a long, how to have a problem with it, but that's how I love y'all.
That was not going to be like what I think, what's going to go. That spray up comes here, she's like...
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, the other way they pick it in.
She wouldn't pick their mom up.
No, probably a couple of months, more, maybe.
You doing all right, Phil?
Uh, how you doing, Jeff?
Doing good, good. All right, how about you?
You know, you sound like a girl, I think, but maybe... I think...
We know what we are, so...
Yeah.
You know, I think we'll have one of them, um, tally, look.
I, I know, I know. I've been trying to read this, but...
Oh, do it.
It is.
You doing good?
I'm doing all right, I'm watching it. Everything going right?
Yep, yep.
What, what are you cleaning for your son, huh?
You know, uh, Danny, you know, uh, phone company. You know, Sarah's pretty man, high school man, hoping what's being sixteen years...
You know?
The marching piece. Get down in Miami, get, uh... I, I said same thing.
You want to go, thank you. It's pretty fun, isn't it?
Oh, it's, yeah.
What? Got a picture of him, huh?
Uh, first of all, Miami, I'm going to say, I have, to get past, uh, the city, uh, of, 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 uh, county, how it's being. Uh, it was changed, that, that high school thing, so, that thing I've never seen, uh...
Is that right?
Nothing, because I've... You know, it's, I've seen others, yeah.
That all the same. Yeah. Yeah, uh, that, that's the service, you know, all day, all day. Because of that church. I don't, I don't, it was a lot, so, then, and he told me that, I don't know, he's stupid. But he's already been, maybe he's stupid, but, uh, well, he's told me, and we've been a lot. Well, I think it was, because he left... Yeah, he, he, he did, he did, he did, actually, it was first at a hundred thousand, then he went to... Once he got daughters, and I think it's something in the next program. And, uh, kind of, we're going back up to a hundred and forty-two, to be fair. I'll find that some time, because, like, you know, she's got... You got, uh, one of the last, I'm used to that, do it, she got her, she's missing. Hang with us, I'll buy that. So, a little lady, she's saying, uh, going, uh, you and I have heard, uh, uh, a little place, and it's thick, but, you know, probably, probably. In places, uh, that lady, uh, from, uh, I believe, she has, uh, her, uh, her, uh, her, uh, uh... Oh, by the way, uh, uh, I don't know, uh, I don't know, uh, I don't know, uh, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. They must have slept time here. So, I'm a god, it's a hundred, it's a woman, I'm not...
I think I'm not free to talk.
All the time you can have, good, sir. Hey, we're trying to get, we're getting... Bruce coming over? Mark. Yeah, all right, it's, it's, uh, 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 uh.
Well, I'm happy to, because it's kind of coming off, and saying, you know, like, the whole, I mean, that's what that's called, right? Good, how are you doing? Thank you, I said, when you come home.
Well, that's new information to give you a little bit of. Okay, take eight minutes out of it. Questions? Changing tax value, once, as I was saying earlier when we started talking about this, our job, our function is to provide the taxing authorities with a taxable value so you can prepare our budget. And this is the taxing authorities that we have in the county. We have the county, which is our base, you guys, a school board, city and state. City of Perry, the MSPU. We had mentioned the Warren Medical District, but we also have the Warren Medical District, which is the same as you guys. They, they got it. So, that's the change in those, you know, the school, uh, the school was higher than you would have been, you ask, why is the school higher than the county? Well, the school has some exemptions, uh, that you don't have, that people aren't, the additional, on the home set, the additional twenty-five thousand affects the county, but doesn't affect the school. So, that's one of the places where the school gains a little more tax value. Um, City of Perry is kind of going up twenty-one percent. And then moving into all that, they have their own dynamics, so what happened there, their impact in tangible personal property. Um, and not the investment that, they didn't see the investment side in the city that we saw in some counties. And so, they got a lot of negotiations with the impact of the role. City. Any questions? Page six. Count taxable value change. When you found the level, what, one point two billion? Today, we're at one point four billion. And if all our records are correct, we just started talking about this this morning, smartly careful with the newspaper part, which we've done verified. But I was thinking about this morning, I was coming in, I was like, I remember that, we were at one point three, now almost one point four, it was the highest it's ever been. And that was in two thousand and seven. And, um, so we had to do some quick research this morning, but if we'll verify at any time soon, okay? Uh, yes, this is high of taxable, or taxable value. A nice little, I, I think, a nice little trend there, um, it's trending on an upward mark. Um, as a whole, I think that's healthy. Uh, once again, you've got that forty-three percent hang around your head, that, uh, makes it very potentially volatile. Page seven. This is always the chart. Up a million, down a million, up a million, down a million, down four million, up three million, down two million, up a million. This is new construction. Um, this could, this, this is, this briefing really impacts a taxable value. Um, let's just say, we go through, we do a sales analysis, and, and a hundred thousand dollar home, uh, is now worth a hundred and ten thousand dollars, ten percent increase, okay? So, that's ten percent increase, you got home set. So, only three percent of that can be added to the taxable value in the roll. If you're non-home setting, your commercial business, or residential, or anything else that's a ten percent cap. So, it takes a lot of real property in order to impact the taxable value in the roll. Yes, what, new construction, one hundred percent. If you go out there and build a hundred thousand dollar house, it's a hundred thousand dollars on the tax. Now, new construction is what will impact a taxable significantly. Tangible personal property, it's a, it's a one hundred percent also, but it's appreciation. New construction, new construction and housing is subject to some appreciation, but normally, it increases. Doesn't depreciate. Housing over, you know, was always a great investment. Before, people came in, they bought some properties, they built a house and a building, it was always for, for a good deal. Real estate's always been a good investment, it appreciates. Um, and new construction, one hundred percent. So, new construction has a huge impact on the tax value. Between, for the city, between the lack of new construction and depreciation, their taxable just basically stays, their taxable value basically stays the same. So, in the event there's new construction, new construction will change that fifty-seven, forty-three ratio very quickly. And in the event, new construction will allow far a, a larger increase in tax hold significantly and very quickly.
How is that, I think that, what is that?
It's gonna be twenty, well, it's gonna be twenty-five thousand of the hundred thousand dollars, and then the, there's no twenty-five thousand, everyone's like forty.
Then you don't get a school tax from a home.
Not on home, that's true, okay? And I think, I remember here, not too long ago, we did a cool ride, uh, take a million dollars, put it on cherry town park. How much is that, what does that do? Sixty-eight dollar brick, or what? Cherry town park. Yes, how much does that do, what that do to the tax roll? If it's new construction, uh...
Renovation.
Renovation. Renovation. It's gonna be a percentage gap. It's gonna be a percentage gap. And, and, uh, you know, we look at the permit, we're gonna look at the permit, values of the permit, then we're gonna go out, we're gonna, you know, look at square footage. Some of that is, I'm not familiar with that one, have you looked at that?
Most of the PPP.
Most of the PPP, uh, the farmers, the harvest, the microwave, we got a hundred percent of them. All the PPP.
How, how do you, I mean, here.
New construction?
I mean, look at this, I mean, it's such a, a very, uh, um, how, I mean, what makes it, uh, how do you explain this?
You know, from a, I, I don't think it's a lot, I, I think the reason you see the volatility, or the, the change in the trend there on the new construction side, uh, it's not a significant amount of money with sixty million dollars, uh, construction.
Not a lot of assets.
It's not a lot of assets. It's just, it's not a lot of houses, it's not a lot of businesses. Uh, sixty million dollars as a whole is, uh, pretty small of a number. And, um, so you would, you would see, the big spike you saw out there, if you'll notice, was two thousand and sixteen, which is the election year, which everybody pretty, uh, headed. I, I think the market was pretty headed, uh, during those election years, and you've got one of them coming out, so you'll probably, you may see that thing tree, uh, from housing.
Tree will buy, it doesn't have to be a lot.
Sure.
Everybody afraid of buying a house, it doesn't have to be.
That's true, that's true.
It's hard to get elected.
Yeah. Page eight. Cause there's not any more questions, we don't have students left. Page eight. This is really, Ben's a great problem, I love this, uh, chart here, uh, when we put this together. Our total value of county is two point three billion. Remember a taxable value of one point four billion? That's almost a billion dollars, fifty percent of the value of the county is not taxable due to all these different classifications and exemptions and... So, and our tax code classification, we talked about that, um, farmers, and harvest farmers, the tree industry, pine, and, and so they get a break on that. Conservation classification, three and a half million dollars. Uh, we have a couple of conservation issues here in the county. We had a new one get added this year, um, and that theoretically takes them off the roll. I think we put them on the cap, we don't have a lot of communication with them, so we're gonna see how that pans out from them. Um, may add to the numbers, uh, between now and tomorrow, but that's part of it. Police, if you call us, one hundred and sixty-eight million. Um, big number. Big number, one hundred and sixty-eight million. Home set caps, forty-seven. Uh, non-home set, thirty-eight million. New year old, they have second home sets, and that gives you a one point eight two of sales value.
Great, and that conservation, climate testing, is that where it's my river is, in the water?
This is all, this is private, down, complex, yeah. And then you just, you, you're head rolling down, uh, all the PPP exemptions is the twenty-five thousand dollars. Everybody has a twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollar PPP, uh, on their value, so, small businesses that have a couple of computers and office chairs and small barns, those guys can be, they have a personal property, so twenty-five thousand, yeah. So, which I think is great, and that, 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 that should be. Um, government, a hundred and eighty-four million, institutional, forty-five million, institutional being, uh...
Merchant home, uh, non-government.
Right.
Something like that.
And, and rolling down, so.
Churches being pretty.
Yes, churches. Institutional churches, yeah, yeah. Um...
Prison, prison and church.
Prison, I mean, government.
Government, church, yeah. And, and you know, Kevin, if I'm understanding this right. Take seven. God, all of these.
Correct.
Crack activation doesn't have a plank of order to do towards any of this stuff.
Head on the head.
Right.
And guess where it all comes from?
We have just valued two billion, three hundred thousand, and yet, just that value of one point eight.
Taxable value, yeah.
Don't have the control over that.
Well, which makes my thinking of that is, legislation, in law, actually, those guys get credit for starting the county. Uh, I must, because this exemption that directly impacts the county, not the state. And when they mandate that, and they pass it legislation, sexually, we have to deal with what's left. And that's what we are, but, yes, but the impact it has on our, our, uh, role is tremendous, tremendous. Got any questions? This, this is great for looking to look at and, and revise, and if, if you get home and you're really bored, and you just wanna read, uh, something even more boring, uh, read it, and if you got any questions, probably, we'll, we'll help you explain it. Ben, uh, putting his graph together, and, uh, Sean is on the tangible side, and, and, um, just calling up them too, they, they, they can answer any questions, I think.
Very helpful.
Thank you. Page nine, uh, number of qualified sales. This shows you a little history of what we're dealing with, from two thousand and fourteen, three hundred sales, to eighteen, was, uh, five hundred and forty-two sales. And this year in nineteen, we're about halfway there, halfway through the year.
Five, three.
Uh, qualified sales, say for instance, uh, if exposed to market, uh, real estate listing, or a individual listing, uh, everybody had an opportunity to, uh, possibly purchase it. Conventional financing, um, if I was to buy a home, and you were financing it for me, that price may be impacted because I was particularly not available for lending, and, and, and I had some private lending. So, that, that could affect pricing or interest rates. So, private lending would kind of, uh, want, want, wanna stay away from that one. Anything that's between family, uh, dad's sales, the kids, you know, uh, the home, our grandkids, something of that nature, uh... If I bought this space, this place, and he threw in twenty cows, you know, that's part of the price, you know? And we send out a letter, uh, for each sale, for every, every one of these five hundred and something sales, we send a letter. And we have a little questionnaire, and we're not trying to be naughty, but when we try to explain that in our letter, it's, you know, it's helpful information about your, your purchases, you know, finance. Tell us what the conventional financing, what the private financing, what the cash. The guy that wants you, uh, private full of cash, and they all value play. Obviously, it's price is gonna be a little different than the guy that wants him, that wants to finance it, do the money, you know, so the cash guy, we kind of, kind of wanna stay away from. But we just want something that's been exposed to the public, everybody can look at, um, and buy with some conventional financing or minimum amount of, you know, it's just not a pool of long cash, you know? And, uh, you know, some of these, we, some of we use, you know, we call outliers, and you know, if we, if we call and, and, um, we get some information, well, we're, we have oversight from partner revenue. This qualified, qualified sales, you know, is a huge discussion every year, because they go through them, and they look at the face of the deed, and they go, no, that was a good, that was a good sale. Well, then I can come back and go, well, it really was, you become a bit, and it, it, you know, we've had some really high sales of property that were significantly impacted in the area of auction, uh, simply because someone paid more than what the market was. And, and if they handle the rest, so we try to, we try to get a piece of this, and we work the revenue, this is, this is one of our big, uh, discussions with them, is when we start getting down to what our sales are qualified, which ones we should use a lot. So, uh, thank you.
Kind of response do you have when you send these letters, do you have business thoughts, and kind of people actually going out and getting it back to you?
It's more a third.
Third, yeah.
Oh, okay.
They don't, they don't, and I get it, and, and, and if it's something we really need, thank goodness, we're small enough town that I can, forget the phone call somebody died.
Let me tell you why I'm asking, just give me a little detail, I can make, you know, I'll just make some notes on it. And then when we go to sales qualification process, then we get to that one, and I'm qualified, and are qualified, and they go, wow, I, I can go back, you just, yeah, I had, I knew this face, and I called him, and, and he told me what, uh, what it means to life.
Now, I, I would take a lot, maybe take that, no, nobody's business.
And I respect that mention, that sort of thing.
My brother, he's back on, he's all, he's playing with me, and he got a little from partner revenue.
Oh, yeah.
And he's like, hey, I feel that thing, I, I just, I don't do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Page ten, non-taxable late. This is a little map, and, and some of the detail, when you get down there, you can't speak to such a large scale. This, it's a hundred eleven thousand acres, it's not on the back roll in our county. Hundred eleven. Church, government, private conservation, whatever it is. I just thought that was very interesting. And if you'll notice, guys, this is our coastline.
How many acres here, what?
Other than, yeah.
That's fine.
Weird. Unless you got any neighbors late, or one of those that have a large natural park, or something of that nature, uh, I would think with proceeds wise, we were considerably higher. Considerably higher. Last page, page eleven, tell me where you're going again, please.
Sure.
That's page twelve, where they have no, new one, how many acres is that?
Seven miles.
How many miles, oh, in that little gap there? Uh, let's see, it's probably from here to here, that's, that one curve, uh, sorry, not, not. Oh, no, that's, that's, that's actually, uh, Fish Creek. So, that's where it starts, Fish Creek. So, that's Fish Creek up to Dead Man's Curve.
I said, I don't understand what you're talking about.
This one? That is really worth it, yeah.
Part, yeah.
Yeah, it's a kind of mix. And product lives. I was gonna say twenty miles, yeah. I think twenty miles is a good estimate. That's all we have left, potentially, developed supplies, which, if you wanna look at value, um, your coastal properties historically will be a little more, um, prosperous, or a square foot, or linear, or whatever unit of measure you use, okay? And this is a little, if it was on the tax roll, then how much money would it cost? How much money would be, um...
All the blue.
All the blue and everything else. All right, we've had some sales, I'm just gonna use generic numbers, so we had some sales in the twelve, the fifteen hundred dollar range, uh, on large pieces of property. So, if we had a hundred thousand that sold at fifteen hundred, that would be ten million and a half, fifteen...
A hundred fifty, this is a common page, but we got a...
How much was the existence right now?
That number be really close to something like that.
Hundred fifty?
Hundred fifty-five, probably, yeah.
Ah, ah, I was, it's, it's about, yeah, it's about...
We got a hundred and eighty-four in government.
Right, and there's one, if that's mostly one river that owns most of that, and that's the government that will attack, the state, the government start, oh, that's what you, that's the losing part to that thing.
That's fifty-eight thousand, that's true, yeah, that formula does not survive for asset taxes, lots of these pieces of property. But, yeah, this was the sixty-eight thousand property gamble sale back in ninety-seven, I think, um, my dad did that, I remember doing this survey for that coastal sale, and, um, so... Last page, page eleven, um, several acres in the county, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty, um, as Ben says, and we were talking about, it depends on how you measure that coastline. At the corner distance, that's drawn a line from one end to the other, and measure. If you went down all the curves and crannies, and, uh, if you, if you meandered the mean hot water line, being the boundary between sovereign and private, all the way down the coastline, you could probably get another, I forget, five thousand, thousands of acres. So, is the number accurate, uh, to that degree, no, but it's generically, somewhere that would make it pretty different. It can have a lot of good sales, but that number can change, do that, measure along that coast, could find out how you do it. Any questions?
Very good, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. I, uh, I wanted to cover a little bit, if, if I might still continue, um, on our budget, I want to touch basically the only, um, I asked for an increase in our budget this year. And, uh, it's mainly in adding a new person, uh, a new field person. Historically, in the county, and we've always went out, we, every five years, we have to physically inspect and improve these properties, plus every new construction, plus every permit group. So, our five-year rotation, you know, we have to do your house, whether you've done the thing or not, and physically might inspect it. Whether you're home or not, most people in our county have couches, and they work, and they're never home, or very seldom home. And we have historically, open the gate, our, uh, when there's not a gate, we, we have a little door hanger, you know, that says, we're properly framed, we came, we came by, and that's the foot trap you see, or the tire mark you see. Well, times have changed, uh, even in our county, say, but, uh, people, uh, have to be really careful and protective of their property. I get, I, I, I'm a little one hundred percent. And, um, if they've got a lock gate, or a shut gate, or a fence, or anything else, um, people have security, and we have things, and, and, and it's become a problem.
How about another trespassing, Tom?
Yeah, it's become a problem for us, you know, bad dog. And, and we, um, you know, I, I'm really concerned about our guys, um, we're fortunate, we've got a couple of guys that, that, uh, you know, they're locals, and they know everybody, and they, it, it kind of works, but that, it, it just changed. And, um, we, we're making a lot of appointments now, so if we go somewhere, and there's a lock gate, our shut gate, our new trespass, you know, we bypass it, we have to come back, we try to make contact with them, whether a letter, or whether a telephone call. And then we're scheduling these appointments. Uh, some people don't want you on there, and I respect that a hundred percent, I sure don't want to put any of our employees, uh, in arms way, and trespass, and, hey, I'm really for you. If I looked up and I saw somebody walking across the field, um, and announced to me who it might be, you know, you, I'd be dressed pretty aggressively too, I get it. Um, so, we, we had to change our approach, and we just can't get to it, we can't get to these parts of it. Uh, every other year, we're auditors, you know, in the, of, of partner revenue, they come down with a team of people. They have a team of people that do the, uh, residential improvement, residentialization, commercial improvement, commercialization, act of focus, I mean, we, they probably have twenty people that come down and fish papers and talk. Um, we're running behind in our five-year inspections, cause we can't get to it. And, uh, uh, we, we've got, we're trying everything we can, but we're running into issues with these lock gates, and, and, and it's just a day and night where we are, which is okay. Uh, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to ask them on our field groups in order to, uh, stay in compliance with these five-year rotations. And we had a, uh, there was, uh, ADB compliance, some of the few guys are familiar with this, we, we, um, can we help out that a little bit, the ADB part?
Uh, ADB compliance.
ADB.
Um, they, uh, website, we have to be in compliance with American Visibility Act, and, um, we see in other counties where people actually do, when they're not compliant. So, um, and one of our associates, you know, they're just really, um, stressed getting our website updated with this, um, Visibility Act, and, uh, you know, it's not exactly, um, so, we have to, you know, we've been getting...
Twenty-five million, five grand, a bunch of that, partly, if, if a dead person calls them on the phone, you have to have meaning to communicate, and we don't have that, and, and, um...
I know if I were one, we'd get that immediately, so you have work that's been sued, because their website, and I'm in the process of upgrading it, I think, and it's gonna be like, same topic, we can talk about it. Five thousand, so you have a major challenge here.
Yeah, yeah, so, we're, we're trying to come to the line for that. Um, our controlling services, um, guys, would, let us through our, our industrial sites, uh, we have some very complex industrial sites, um, that are very difficult to evaluate and to assess. Um, we, we're very fortunate, so fortunate, that we have some outside help, that we can reach out and grab and have those guys come in. Um, otherwise, some of these values, uh, two years ago, is the example of, of cell towers. The cell tower industry is just advancing in leaps and bounds. We took the ten million dollars in value on the tangible side of the cell towers, just by simply involving these people who are up and current with this advance in some of these industries, uh, our mill, our pollution control, uh, process out there. What is pollution, what is not pollution, what's intended to something is pollution. Each equipment may have some type of participation and contribution to production and pollution, and it's, we start this in early November, uh, going through the detail of every one of these pieces of equipment, what are we going to dedicate pollution, what are we going to dedicate to production? And, uh, we, we need the assistance of these people in order to be able, uh, assess some of these industries that we have. So, I've asked for a little bit of that, so, all in all, I just wanted to explain to you guys what I'm asking for in the reasoning. Uh, the biggest expense of it is coming to add another additional person, and, um, you know, by time you take a thirty-five thousand dollar salary, it's a benefit, it's about sixty thousand dollars. And, uh, that's what, that's where the majority of our, uh, additional budget request was, is where others, and, and what our reasoning behind it. We're always, we go work with whatever we gotta work with, uh, for you guys, and, and get done, but I wanted to give you a little detail back of where that was, so...
Now, yeah, Sandy, that's already in the budget, so, so we don't take it out, you do it.
Sure.
And you heard most of it, it'll pay for itself, having that extra, better portion of value these times, correctly, it'll lack the paper, it's out.
You know, it's, it's, it's being up with industry standards and, and what's happening in those individual, uh, pockets, and, uh, if we just, we don't have the, the money to tend to one of those people. And, uh, being able to hire the services, a lot of teachers, and trying to educate, or specialize from our guys, it's, it's a huge help.
That, that big, yeah.
Yes, huge at work. Yes, sir.
And some questions to that reality. Will you ever get to the point where you can use drone technology for something? And then you're back to me, better know.
Well, we're there, I mean, we, um, I, I personally have it on, uh, from a personal, uh, use, uh, during the storm, we used it, um, and, uh, to, uh, look at, uh, different situations, and that's good. On a daily basis, um, I would not do it, particularly from a privacy standpoint. Um, I may be out there in my CDOs, uh, someday, and if I lose drugs, or my lawyer's gone over there, my wife will be mad like that, and I get it. Um, I, I, so, we're not going to go and, and to that point, because, you know, if we have a structure that, that it would, um, would, would help us with, um, and we went to that individual, and, and, uh, Mark, when you put that in paper by my speed, I don't know, I failed it too much. Um, and it would help, we contact them and add permission, and then, I know Bolley is doing, uh, uh, for her, she's doing some of the temporary, uh, drones, and, which, which helped them significantly. Um, our biggest asset that we have is aerial photography, pictometry, uh, the only aerial photography was for those, uh, living straight down. We do a bleep now, so we're, we're flying along, we're taking a picture from the front, we're taking a picture from the side, and from the back of the plane, and they capture all angles. And we have some, um, we have some photography available to us, you guys, I've talked to you about it, uh, and I provided for the shares, and I provided for the City of Perry, uh, guys, it's pretty, um, it's pretty detailed.